This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, I'd like to call the Village Board to order for Tuesday, December 14th. Roll call, please.
President Kardasky.
Here.
Trustee Paul.
Yep.
Looks like, is Trustee Kabaki excused? Trustee Zerbal also. Trustee Krieger.
Yep.
Trustee Flukie.
Yeah.
Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please remember our men and women throughout the world in uniform. I need, actually, oh, I need to change the agenda, please. I would like to move item J up to AA.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend the agenda and accept as presented. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Number five, 5A, action on the Village Board, regular meeting November 23rd and the closed session minutes from November 23rd.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to accept those minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 5B, joint Village Board and Finance and Personnel Meeting from November 9th, 2021.
Motion to approve.
Well, second it.
Motion and a second to accept that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Number six, comments from the public must be limited to items not on the agenda. Must state your name and address. Limited to five minutes. The board's role is to listen and not discuss the item. Personnel issues cannot be discussed nor individuals named. Board is not able to take action at this meeting. Is there anybody who would like to talk about items not on the agenda? Anybody who wants to discuss anything not on the agenda? Hearing none, we'll move along. Number seven, I have no written communications or announcements. Does anybody have any?
Do not.
No, the thing I know, it's pretty lonely down here.
It is down here too, Gary.
I need some company.
Six feet of distance, Gary. Six feet of distance here.
There you go.
Okay, number eight, action on the consent agenda. 8A, action on the operators licenses. B, action on change of agent, PMI Entertainment Group, DBA, Brown County Veterans Memorial Complex, Steve Zimmer. C, investment report. D, general fund financial report, December year-to-date. And E, budgeted expenditures. I need a motion to approve or have something pulled.
I'll move to approve. Second.
Motion and a second to accept that as approved. The consent agenda, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, number nine, action items. 9A, update on the PAC from Keith, Lucius, and Kate Green. Welcome.
Thank you for having us. This is one of the fun things to report on because it's such a great example of how two boards can work together for the same goal and for the benefit of the community. And that's really what our PAC is, where we've got a performing arts center that has community events and school events, and we're working together to accomplish those. In that light, it's one of those situations that isn't happening in other places. So there really wasn't a lot of places I could go to find resources on how to financially account for this and then how to communicate that out so boards feel informed. And one of my goals this year is to help you feel more informed and to get some feedback from you on what other information you need. So what you'll see, the first two pages of what was included in your board packet are the financial statements from the last two years. And what I'm really hoping to get from you is some feedback on, is this the level of detail you want? Is there other information that you need? And to also see if you understand, if you have questions on where the statements are. So with that said, I'll give you a quick overview of the statements. What you'll see is the 1920 income statement and the 2021 income statement. And you'll see two very different years. The 1920 year, where we really hit the brunt of COVID, you see we run a deficit. And we did everything we could to try to recover, and Kate did an awesome job. And what we did in 2021, we ran a surplus. And that is really credit to Kate and every, all the hard work she did to find grants and then to find programs or events that could still happen in a COVID world. And try to, can't go at the same capacity, do all, make all those adjustments and make it safe so people felt comfortable coming. So we have two different years, and the good news is, the good year more than offset the bad year. So overall, we're sitting with a fund balance of a little over $100,000. That fund balance becomes our reserve as we, if we have another year like we had two years ago, and becomes our reserve if we have unexpected things come up. So that's one of those reserves that we can use. If Kate has a show coming and all of a sudden something breaks that night and she needs to fix it, rather than coming to both boards and getting approval, she can just take care of it and use those reserves to take care of it. So that, that was one of our goals, to start building up a reserve for the Performing Arts Center. So going back to 1920, you see we show a deficit as far as revenue and expenses of $32,092.63. And then this last year, we have a surplus of $131,613. And in that, I guess I want to be clear that some of that surplus is grant money that has to be spent. So it's not, so some of, when we look at the fund balance at the end of this past year of $104,000, some of that money is reserved for those grants and has to be spent. It's not reserves that we can save for those things that just may come up or that we need to, and we need to be clear on that. So next time I come back to you after next year, we're going to have a smaller fund balance, I expect. So I just want to make sure we're clear on that expectation, that that's not where we will be because that money has to be spent. And some good news, I don't hate to steal Kate's thunder, but she got another grant this week. She's out there still pounding the pavement, finding opportunities and finding funding to make sure we've got things going. So with that, I'd rather have your feedback on what other information do you need? What, is this valuable or do you need a different level of detail? And is this timing right as far as when to bring it? Our fiscal year ends June 30th, and then we waited for our audit to be finished to be able to bring these statements to you. Is this the time of year that works best for you or is there a different time when you want to see financial updates?
Well, our fiscal year ends December 31. We just finished our budget. You know, we just approved the minutes last month. But I think if we continuously get this on a yearly basis, I think it's, it's just good. You know, the 2019, 2020 income statement is a little sad. But it was that way all over the world because of the whole COVID thing. I mean, you couldn't have anybody anywhere. So for us to bounce back in the 20, second half of the 2020 and 2021, I think is, it's a really good, a really good thing that we have the balance, the fund balance that we do. So I'm comfortable with, with it coming here after you've had your audit. I'm, I don't know, I don't.
I would agree. I think this is an actual, a very good time to get this at the end of our year. But just in the presentation, I'd just like to see them side by side instead of, because I was going up and down all the time. It's just a cosmetic thing. Yeah, I know. I know.
I'm old school.
Jay, they're going to put you in the timeout section by Gary. You keep that in.
A lot more room down there. That'd be the only thing, Keith, that I would just suggest. It just makes it easier to read, you know. And, and I would also, one thing I would like to have seen, I would like to see in the 2018.
Sure.
Oh, yeah.
To see how that now compared to where you were this, this year. Because that's better comparison than the COVID year.
That's very true. In fact, you know, considering we were essentially a startup operation five years ago, the COVID year is the first year that ever saw a negative balance. And that's really saying something, so.
That's why I'd like to see that carry through. Because it, you know, it just would be, and I think it shows how well the PAC is doing, how well it's being managed, how well it's being taken care of and everything, and how the great need that it's providing to Ashwabhanan. So I think it's all, it's great. I just think we lay it out, we can just show it better.
Jay, I will try and get you 18, 19. The reason I'm hesitant on that is we had to get special approval from the state for how we're accounting for it. Basically, we created a separate fund for it. And that was the year of transition. So you got half in a different fund and half, so I can see what we can do with.
Keith, don't spend time on it, just do it forward.
Okay.
Yeah, you don't have to go backwards, just go forward.
I think something else worth mentioning, and this ties in with what Keith said about our relationship, the way this venue was created to serve, you know, the school district of Ashwabhanan and the public. You know, one, the reason we were able to get so many grants due to COVID was because of that community portion of what we program is really what made us eligible. We're ineligible for others because we're government-owned, and that's fine. But, and then I think the other thing that's worth noting and remembering is, so we're working on financials and bringing in money and shows with a reduced capacity on the calendar. So about 59% of usable calendar dates at the Performing Arts Center are used by the school district, which are events that do not bring in outside funds. So we really are in good shape. And, and it helped us with the COVID year too. Even though we saw a loss, we were healthy going into it, into a bad year for everybody.
You know, that, that is one of the things Keith goes, and you, Kate, you go to different seminars, and people are amazed at the relationship that our school district has with our village. It usually doesn't work that way.
Right.
So, yeah, very proud of that and do a great job.
Thanks.
I just have a couple of questions on the budget, just so I understand it better. So you come next time. The prepaid expenses in both budgets is a $51,350. What is that coming from or what is that?
So that was a scheduled event that was delayed because of COVID and has not been, has not happened yet.
Okay.
So basically, we paid the expense, but then the performer didn't come because of COVID. Performer, I believe, is coming in 21, 22, and that's where that cost. So that, some of those are unusual things that happen because of COVID.
They're deposit payments to artists.
Oh, okay. The other question I had, Kate, I thought you were successful in getting grants in 1920 as well as 2021 from the state. Did you get it both years or just the one year?
Timing of the grants, so applications would have gone in starting in 2020. Other applications went in yet this year in 2021. So we're seeing awards and realizations of the funds coming in in both years. So there will be, in the next financial report, in our next fiscal year, you're going to see dollars coming in in that fiscal year too that would have been on paper awarded this year. Does that answer the question you had or?
Yes, so how much did you end up getting for the grants from the state?
We are a little over $140,000.
Oh, nice.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Like Kate said, I do know that, you know, we were ineligible for several grants because we are affiliated with the government and the school, so.
It's okay, you don't know until you apply.
Exactly, yeah. One other question I have, and all the capital items that you have listed, how do you, how do we go about funding the capital items? And have you purchased the intelligent light fixtures yet or is that put off until next year?
We haven't purchased them yet. So I'll let you answer the, the main part of that question. But you would have received a listing of long-term and short-term needs, equipment needs for the Performing Arts Center as we go along, as we realize in our lifespan of what is needed and what we're missing and planning for things that are ultimately going to, you know, break down and need replacement. And so, no, we have not purchased the intelligent light fixtures. That project did get postponed because of COVID. And it's also part of an overall plan of, as we look at the budget balance, that we, the fund balance at the end of each year, how much of that do we want to maintain? How much do we want to spend? What does that really look like? We're not so new anymore in the respect that we have a good sense of what that looks like and, and what should we spend annually? That's a comfortable number to keep the center at optimum levels as equipment ages and, and needs additions to it. That doesn't answer the very first part of your question.
The how do we spend it question is a good one, and it's one of those things that we've worked with the village and tried to define that process as best we can, but we don't have a great answer there. Basically, the way it's working now, we've got some grant money that may fund some of these items on this equipment list, and then the rest would be fund balance. And if we have larger items, that may be where we do go back to both boards and say, well, can we split this or how do we move forward? That's how we've done it in the past, is we've gone back to boards, both boards and said, okay, the driveway where the props and everything were coming in, we needed to expand that. And the Village Board paid half and the district paid half, and we, we did that. So we're looking at those options. There's always a fundraising option if there's a large, really large project as well. So there, there are a lot of options. Fund balance would be the smaller thing. And in the fund balance, really, I think we need to keep a certain amount of reserves for an emergency. So it's the night of a show and this broke. Kate needs to get it done, and we need to have that flexibility so she can get it done and manage that like any other venue would.
But fundraising is always a part of it. That's something that we do every year with the shows we have coming in. You know, this, this year I've brought in, or have commitments for a little under $50,000 to support the programming that's going on. So what we have not yet done is I haven't hit the pavement with a list of items and could you contribute towards this specific thing? So I see it as a three-legged stool, a front, you know, we've got going out asking for donations towards it. And then either we, either the school district and/or the Village Board altogether, or the village looks at funding some of these projects, depending on what they might be. Yeah.
One other thing you should be aware of that Kate implemented that is really smart is with every ticket sold, there's a facility fee, part of it is that, how much per ticket?
$1.
$1 per ticket. So basically, that's going into a separate reserve fund for when those things break and we have that. So, so every ticket for any event, a dollar of that ticket is going to that facility fee because we're using up that resource and we've got to replace it. So that's what that money, that would be the first money used.
Again, for long-term planning, you know. When we started out of the gate, you don't know what you need. But you know you're going to need something. So, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Do you, for your capital projects here, Kate, do you have these listed in order of?
I do, they are in order of preference right now.
Of what you feel you need quickly?
Preference and anticipated priority.
Okay.
Yeah. And this is a living, breathing document. It's going to change as we go, but it's most up to date as of December 5th.
And a lot of these, you're looking for possible sponsorship, I would have think too, right?
That would be great, absolutely. I mean, if we don't have to outflow all the cash on our, on our own, absolutely.
Right.
You got it.
Is there a, is there a separate committee that looks at doing the fundraising?
Yeah, so the Performing Arts Center has a community advisory board. And historically, in the last five years, they have been the arm that assists in fundraising in general, primarily for the programming arm of things. That's why I mentioned I haven't, we haven't gone out with a list of equipment needs. But they are willing to do that, so. We will task them with it.
Excellent.
Yeah.
And I appreciate you guys coming with all the budget information. But one other request I would have is maybe once a year or quarterly or something, at least get us a document, tell us what's going on at the PAC, like how the programs are going, what's happening, what's not, just to keep us in the loop, even if it's just an email update. That would be great to see.
We can do that.
With attendance figures?
What?
With attendance?
With attendance, sure.
I think that would be just helpful, just to see, okay.
Yeah, just to see what's going on, absolutely. Yeah, last, last year was different, so we didn't do anything and it sort of fell off the.
Correct, I mean, last year, you just got to throw that out.
Yeah, I know, I know. But we're picking up, this December is rockin' and rollin', we have 23 events before the holidays. So it's, it's definitely busy. Attendance is not at the level that it's been pre-COVID. And I think that's, I know that's something that is being seen across the country. That's not unique to us. And talking with colleagues around the state, it sounds like we're actually doing pretty darn well as far as our attendance level. So while I was feeling a little bummed about it, I'm not anymore comparatively. I mean, I'm still bummed about it, but, you know, and I think that, and I know some of these grants are really in recognition of the fact that, yes, we're open as venues, but we are not realizing the same level of income and attendance that would be quote-unquote "normal." And I anticipate there might be granting opportunities going into next year to address this very thing because as venues open up, some are still at reduced capacity. You know, everything's not quite there yet.
Last week at the event that we were at, at the PAC, I was pleasantly surprised at how many people were there.
Yeah, we had a great crowd, we had over 500 people, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're coming back.
Yeah, that was good to see.
But things that might have been a sellout for us are, are closer to the 500 mark.
Right.
But again, it's, it's good to see people in there.
Yeah, yeah, it is, very good, so.
But the only comment I want to make is thanks for coming because I was thinking of that a couple of weeks ago, we haven't heard from you people. We know the COVID was an issue, as we use that for an excuse for everything, but it, it is real. But it's good to see that you gave a nice presentation for the, excuse me, for the work you're doing. So I applaud you for coming rather than asking you to come and wondering what's going on over there, so.
Thank you, happy to do it. Just got to get back in the routine of things. And as Keith said, you know, as we discover the best accounting practices for, for the business, now that we're five years in, we really, you know, kind of have it nailed down better. So happy to give the updates.
Good.
No, we appreciate your time too, so thank you.
Any more questions, comments? Otherwise, this is informational only, so thank you very much, great info.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And you'll pardon me, I have to go to a Parkview band concert now.
Have fun. Okay, so we have 9AA, which is actually 9J. Action on Resolution R 12-1-21, Disallowance of Claims. Tommy, Gothier, Swetlick, Benwright, Shammer, and Singh. Okay, Joel.
This particular resolution that is being presented to you this evening is related to a claim of damages from a variety of different residents here in the village of Ashwabhanan for an occurrence that occurred earlier in 2021. This particular claim was presented to the village's insurance in which, at one point in time, we received notification for them that they were not going to allow the claims from an insurance point of view. And under the statutes then, that that claim has to be returned back to the board for consideration for disallowance. So the resolution before you tonight is based on the recommendation from the village's insurance, liability insurance carrier, to disallow the claims that are being presented for you. So with that, I'll answer any questions. In addition to that, I also understand that there may be residents that are affected by this disallowance in the audience with us tonight that may be interested in speaking to you in regards to this claim.
Before we open, because there are some residents that may want to talk tonight. But before we do that, could I hear from Doug and Al about this event? I just remember riding by the village hall and I saw Doug and Al's trucks in the driveway, and I'm like, this is not good, because I think it was Sunday morning.
Sure, just, just to give a brief summary, this was back on August, it was either August 8th or August 9th, that Sunday morning. Storm came through the village. Had an occurrence here at Village Hall, which everybody saw. Also had down at Early Street, the Early Street lift station down there, experienced a failure of the computer circuit board that received the controls from the transducers, the level sensors, and a failure of the communication line leaving the lift station. So there was power to the lift station, but there was no communication operating it. That failure caused the pumps not to start, not to operate, once they failed, and backup to occur in the sanitary sewer line and then into the houses that filed claims. What then happened was there was a resident that called the 24-hour number, the person on call. Person on call went out, started the pumps in manual control, pumped everything down. And from that point forward, then the cleanup began at the, at the residences.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Doug or Al?
So this has been disallowed by our insurance carrier then, for all practical purposes, correct?
That is correct.
Do you know why it was disallowed, what the reasoning was behind it?
To my understanding, due to acts of nature, acts of, of God, if you will, the failure at the pump was related to electrical strike of some sort that created that communication error. And because of that, there was no finding of negligence on our part, and that is the reason for the disallowance of claim.
Okay. I do know that we do have some residents here. If somebody would like to open the floor to allow the residents to speak, if anybody would like to come forward.
I'd like to move to open the floor and hear the resident speak on this.
Second. We have a motion and a second to open the floor. If, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Are any of the residents from down on the Early Street area would like to speak? Could you come forward, please, and state your name and address for the record, please?
Hi, Brian Tommy, I live at 2250 Early Street. I've been a resident of Ashwabhanan my whole life. Sir, if I can just ask you, did you say that there was power to the pump, but the control panel didn't work?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
My name's Al, I'm the utility supervisor. Yes, there was power to the pump. So the, the generator that we have down there had no part or play into this. What had happened was there was a surge that took out part of the circuit board, that the transducer, which reads the levels in the, in the tank that every, that all the effluent goes to. And what had happened is, at that point that it went out, that transducer was reading that it was just a low level. So what happened is the computer thought that it was just at a low level, so the pumps never kicked on. So then what had happened then is we keep, there is kind of a buffer safe zone that should something like that happens, we get a high water alarm. We have approximately, probably a half hour to an hour's worth of time that when we get a call or alarm, that our guys can go down there and catch that before it starts backing up into the sewer system, out to the houses. So what had happened then is, when that went out, the backup alarms did, did contact our SCADA system. Our SCADA system gets its, gets its signal through a PLC that's down at our Mike Van Station. And because of that, our telephone line is hooked to our PLC besides the SCADA system. So when, that's pretty expensive equipment down there. So there's a surge protector on that also, that also had gone out at the same exact time. So when the lift station was calling out an alarm, it was going to the SCADA. The SCADA was trying to call out, and I can look on the history of that. It had called out every one of the guys on the utility crew, and it had tried calling me. The problem was, the call never went out. So when, when my foreman got down there, you can, you can run it by manually, by bypassing the computer. And so that's what he had did. And then when we finally got a whole total crane that are, that fixes our four lift stations down there, and they do biannual maintenance on those lift stations, he came down there, found out what the problem was. We ended up setting up a temporary float system for about a week it took to get the, the new circuit board in. And then, then we ended up replacing that circuit board. And from that point now, that temporary float system that will bypass that computer is now a third backup, or a backup to the backup, I should say. So again, we do monthly maintenance down there. The crews go down there every month, they run the generators, everything's checked, oil levels are checked. And then we have a outside company that comes and does a biannual maintenance on those things. So it's, it's, you know, technology's great until it doesn't work.
Which, which I understand. So, you know, it wasn't an act of God that day. To me, it's more of a equipment failure. And I'm not going to question maintenance because I'm not an expert. But we have thousands of dollars worth of damage. It was not an act of God, because obviously there's power there. There's no power shortages on Early Street. I've lived here all my life. You know, I don't, this is, I don't, has, this is what we pay insurance for, just our taxes go towards insurance. It's a pass-through. You know, we're the ones paying for it. It's a pass through. You know, we're the ones paying for the insurance. When has insurance ever covered anything? This is here again. I'm not questioning maintenance. To your point, this is equipment failure that caused damage. Thousands, my personal house had $6,000 worth of damage. My father-in-law's duplexes, thousands of dollars worth of damage, and we had to clean it up. You know, there's kids that live in these places. Everything we got, clean it up. The village, clean it up, clean it up, bring your claim in. Four months it took to say an act of God.
Did you, did you make homeowners' claims on your own homeowners' insurance?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Is that the way you get paid for that? Or is that still in process?
That's still in the process. Because like I said, you know, this happened August 8th. It's four months later. I'm not worried about me so much. I'm worried about a lot of the kids that have kids, that we had to get these places cleaned up. Here again, I don't know how many claims the village ever paid out, if they paid out anything like this before. But in my mind, this was not an act of God. This is something, a failure of equipment due, and here again, I'm not going to speculate or say what caused it. But that's the way, that's the way we have the village. That's why the village has insurance.
The village has, the village has insurance to cover situations when there's negligence and other things. In this case, there wasn't negligence.
But how do you know it was a negligence?
He explained it.
Well, he explained it, but I mean, I'm telling you, I know that's easy to say.
That's why you have homeowners' insurance. We cannot.
I understand it, but homeowners' insurance is deductible too, sir.
It's a lift station. That happens. Municipalities had lift stations. It wasn't due to any negligence and part of the village of Ashwabanon. And those things happen.
Well, that's, I understand. That's what insurance, that's what insurance is for.
Excuse me, let me talk, okay? It is an act of God. It is beyond our ability. We can't be everything for everybody. And all other municipalities handle this in the same way. You know, I feel for you. I know I've had my sump pumps go out. That's not good at all either. But the bottom line is, is this is not the responsibility of the village of Ashwabanon. We do maintenance. We take care of those lift stations. We have contracts with maintenance organizations that take care of that for us. But we, it's a situation where you don't, we can't be everything for everybody at all points in time. And these things happen, especially when you have lift stations. You know, you try to have gravity flow sanitary sewer systems, so this doesn't occur. However, those get plugged, and that happens just as well. But the bottom line is municipalities in this kind of situation will deny it. The insurance company denied it. It's an act of God. I hate to have to tell you that, but that's just the nature of the beast.
Okay. Now, I hate to have to tell you, I don't believe that it's an act of God. I think it's equipment failure due to something, either bad equipment, faulty equipment, or potentially maintenance. How do you say by maintenance? What clarifies good maintenance and not good maintenance?
Annual routine maintenance constitutes good maintenance, and that's what we have in this village.
If I may, if I may, just interject a little bit. So obviously, this information was presented to our insurance provider. Based on the information that was presented to our insurance provider, if it was viewed as a lack of or negligent maintenance on the equipment, then a claim would have been allowed. However, there wasn't sufficient evidence by our insurance to justify that there were negligent actions or there was negligent maintenance to the equipment. What information was provided is obviously the equipment, there was an electrical surge as a result of a lightning strike that shorted out the computer board at our at our station, which ultimately inhibited or prohibited the communication system for communicating back to us that there's a problem at the station. Al had described that power was available. That is primarily because the main power supply to the station had failed, and backup power was provided by our generator on site. So if our generator hadn't been there and been available, there would have been no power to that station either. But because we had backup power that was available, unfortunately, the communication board was, quote unquote, fried, if you will, because of that lightning strike. And that failure because of that lightning strike was the reason why we weren't able to be called out.
Joel, if I could interject a little bit. No, the power did not go out. There was this, if anybody has seen or looked at a circuit board, there are little resistors in the circuit board. It's any, any computer or anything, you know, that people have taken apart. You see those green circuit boards with all the little soldering and all the little wires. And there's little resistors in there. And what happened is it doesn't take much to take those things out. And when Crane, our contractor that came there to look at it, when he pulled that board out, there was no corrosion on that board, like water had gotten in there or spiders or anything that would have built a nest in there, because we do check on that thing. It was, it was literally fried, blackened. And that's, that's what caused that communication from that transducer couldn't go to the rest of the computer.
Well, thank you, Al, for clarifying. There was no electric power surge or lightning strikes and all this and that. Okay, here again, like I said, I mean, obviously, a situation that, I've lived here a long time. I've used my insurance for several things. I'm not one to sit here and try to get the village on anything. But like I said, I've lived here my whole life, paid taxes here my whole life. This is my one time that unfortunately I have in a situation. I think it's something that I should bring to the board. And I feel that this situation was not an act of God. I feel it's equipment failure, nobody's. But that's what, in my mind, that's what we have insurance for. Do the village for something like this, nothing proper yours. I've had my sump pump go out. I've had my kids unplug it and go out. I could have did all kinds of stuff and this and that, and I didn't. I did what everybody does pay. But like I said, there's thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars of damage.
I think it's a new construction. They actually have check valves in there that that help with that, Al? Is that, and was my new construction?
I'm a master plumber by trade. And when I started plumbing back in 1990, the Wisconsin code required anything from that point, if you had anything below grade, need to be protected by a backwater valve. And then we used to do a clear water inspection to all homes that were sold, and we used to require those. But probably about 11, 12 years ago, the governor passed a law that we couldn't require an inspection like that that would inhibit the sale of a house or property. So we stopped doing those. But yeah, any, any house after 1990, all those, most of those, unless they were rebuilt, were way pre, probably 1960s, some were built on then. So.
Thank you.
I think the issue here is that was the village negligent on anything that we did? And we were not, that's what the insurance found, is that we were not negligent, and that is why they denied the claim.
And then I think it'd be up to the village maybe to go after the manufacturer of the part. Here again, like I said, this is what you're going to do. Like I said, I felt pretty, you know, I had to do something. I had to say it. Like I said, I'm not one to try to get over on anybody. I've lived here my whole life. My kids go to school. My wife works at the school. But like I said, we do have some properties. Like I said, it's, my own house is one thing. But I had to get those basements cleaned for these people with their kids, for the mold and everything else. And that's the first thing is safety. And I apologize, I don't got everything. I just flew back from business. My daughter in Charleston tonight, my son called me, goes, there's a board meeting. So I don't got a ton of it, but I did have to talk to you guys about it. So that's, that's my say. So I don't.
Well, we definitely appreciate you coming and sharing that with us. And we feel for you. We understand.
Like I told Michael before, I grew up out in Swamaco and big floods back years ago when everybody had septic systems and the big floods, all the covers would float off. Yeah, we had three feet of water in our house. Yeah.
Yeah. And like I said, it wasn't a huge storm. I think maybe we had a half inch, inch of water that day. Like I said, it wasn't, like I said, right, it won't be four months later that we don't know what an act of God is, right? Something that bad happened in the village, big storms, big floods, we know about it. We dealt with it down there. We never came after anybody. I mean, but like this, I think there was a, you know, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak about this issue? Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Michael Singh, 2151 Early Street. Very similar situation. I guess a little bit more damage, more of a finished basement, I guess, was over $15,000 worth of damage. I guess I'm not going to, you know, reiterate anything else that he, you know, the last gentleman kind of touched on other than, you know, definitely have some very similar feelings regarding this whole thing. Doesn't seem like it's an act of God. Kind of as he mentioned in the official denial letter, was that their claim after their investigation was that unfortunate loss occurred when the lift station servicing your home ceased to operate after an electrical storm hit the area and took out power to the lift station, which is not the story that is being presented. So I guess there's definitely some confusion there over what that is. I guess based on comments and stuff like that, not under the impression that that's probably going to be determining any, you know, outcome. What are your guys' thoughts regarding that? I am not an engineer. I'm not a plumber or not an insurance person. But the design definitely seems a little different there. It was a storm, you know, storms were at home. And for that to be part of the name with the storm, and then there's electrical issue where there's no backup. It sounds like potentially, possibly, there are the temporary system that's in there now will be in there. So there's a backup, but it seems like a poor design for something to be designed for pumping out water during a storm, to not have a plan B in place for it to be impacted by a storm with an electrical surge or something like that. Just not my profession, but seems like a, a poor design at the very least. So I guess I won't try and get into restating everything else that the last gentleman just said. Does not seem like a act of God. I don't know that it was mechanical failure. I don't know if it was just poor design or what exactly happened regarding all of that. Even after four months of an investigation and, you know, testimony here tonight, seems like everyone is not on the same page, including people who have a lot more information about what did or did not happen than I do. Just doesn't seem like we're going to get a general consensus on all of that. I guess, very frustrating to be in this situation because I've had a sump pump fail and stuff like that before. It's completely different when it's sewage as opposed to rainwater backing up. And to have that many systems fail all at once, as the last gentleman just stated, where it wasn't, wasn't an act of God, like there was, you know, a foot of water that was, you know, dumped in a, you know, a short period of time. To have that much water backed up into our finished basement with water and sewage and everything else is really disappointing that we're four months in and I have no information. I guess hopefully this, something is in place where this can't happen again. But yeah, very, very frustrating that it's taken this long to have it chalked up to being an act of God and no one's, no one's fault.
Okay. Thank you. So Al, you said that we now have a temporary, but it's going to stay there? That will be another safety feature for it?
Yeah, we, you know, we have our generators down there if full power goes out. Now, is there anything in place to, you know, to protect that circuit board? Yeah, it's built into that circuit board, and it was built into the last circuit board, too. That's called those transistors. And that's what those are supposed to do is when they blow, they're supposed to protect the rest of that circuit board. Yeah, I mean, you can have, you know, A, B, C, and D backups in there. When a situation like that happens, you know, it's unpreventable. So we do as much as we can. We've got five different lift stations in the village here that we maintain. We do keep up to date per standards of DNR. Like I said, yeah, we left that temporary float system in there as a backup C, I should say. You know, it's the third backup. So.
Al, I heard him say the word of a poor, poor defective circuit board. Al, is that the, you know, is that the standard circuit board that everybody's using, the equipment in there?
Yeah, you know, we rely on Crane because they do this every day. They put them through municipalities, not only just in our state, they work all over the country. And yeah, we now have the latest and greatest, you know, the 2020 version in there. But yeah, those are kept up. Like I said, we do have them come biannually and check on things, change oils and maintain pumps and stuff like that. And they do check, you know, we run through the whole rigmarole, make sure that we set off alarms purposely, make sure that the SCADA calls out and everything like that. So, yeah, I mean, they were the, they were the technology, you know, that we had.
Are they all backed up with generators?
Yeah, every single one.
Yeah, that to me is your, you know, even though you had to get a call from a person in the area, you still had the backup generators to start pumping, which you did manually to get the system working so that the problem didn't continue, didn't, you know. An occupied home, you could have filled it up, the basement up if you didn't have the, which, or if you didn't do what you did do. So you did the best you could for the situation that you had on hand. And thank God for the person calling because of the failure.
And like I said, we do, we do have a buffer zone in the tank itself that allows the utility crew. I think it's anywhere from a half hour to an hour to get there. We have that kind of capacity that we could take full flow at. The problem was that whatever came through the lines also took out our surge protector on our phone line at the Mike Van station, to which it could not call out to the emergency crew.
These lift stations are always a lot of fun from a sanitary sewer perspective. You try and have as minimal a number in the community as you can.
I understand that.
There are some that have 11, 12, 13 of these things. I think Swamaco was, I call it the land of the lift stations, or about 13, because it's so flat down along the river. That's where we're going to be flatter.
Yeah.
You know, the other side of Ridge Road is a little bit different. That being said, you know, what we're doing here is what other municipalities are doing here. A lightning bolt is an act of God.
Oh, that's right.
You know, I mean, what more can be said? And we most assuredly, you know, $15,000 worth of damage to your basement, that's got to be a royal pain, you know, in all, in more ways than one. I think we're doing everything we can. We'll try and do more as technology improves. But bottom line is, technology, when it works, is great. When it doesn't work, it's interesting. So we appreciate you coming and that type of thing. And but boy, this happens in other municipalities as well in the state of Wisconsin. There's no sure thing here relative to sanitary sewer flow. Even in a gravity drain situation, you can get a plug and it'll back up, you know, unless you know about it. If we knew about it, then we would be ruled negligent. But, you know, the insurance company took a look at it. We had backups. We tried to do the best we can. Sometimes we have failures, and I understand your, your concerns and your situation.
So just one last question. I mean, you were saying that there's, this was Plan C. So if there's another act of God, that this isn't going to be a problem again? Or if the same thing happens, then the same circuit board can fail and we're in the same situation then? Or could you touch on what that meant if there is a?
Yeah, so that circuit board reads the levels through a transducer. It's not a physical float inside there. It's an electronic thing that sends a signal through the water. And it can. It's a electronic thing that sends a signal through the water and that it can tell how deep the water is. We have them at the water towers to tell us how much water's in our water towers and stuff like that. The, the backup now that we have are the two floats, which the, and I know your next question is, well, why don't you have that to start with? And the reason being is those floats are, are not very reliable because again, it's a, it collects sewer, which collects toilet paper, collects these so-called flushable wipes and stuff and then get hung up on there. And then the floats do not flip and, and there's mercury inside those floats. And when they flip, that's when it can send a signal through. So they, they can be very troublesome, very unreliable versus a transducer. However, that's what we have in there as a backup C now.
Okay. Thank everyone for their time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Move to close the floor.
Second. Before we close the floor, I would just like to ask, does anybody else want to say anything on this item? Okay, we have a motion and a second to close the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. I, I really feel their pain. Like I said, I went through many floods and, you know, they're not, not fun to have to clean up after.
All right, I hate to be the bad guy, but I'll move to disallow the claim for resolution R 12 dash 1 dash 21.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to disallow the claim, resolution number R 12 dash 1 dash 21. Any more comments? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. 9B, action on temporary liquor license extension at Titletown Plaza. Chris.
Titletown Sports Services requesting a temporary liquor license extension off the Titletown Plaza area at 1065 Lombardi Avenue for December 31st of 2021 and January 1st of 2020. At the Public Works and Protection Committee, they recommended approval. So there's any questions? I believe Jordan Burke is on the go-to meeting.
All right, being in the Public Works and Protection Committee, we recommended approval on this. It is for the celebration of New Year's. Hopefully they're going to bring a better New Year in than we had last year. But that's the reason for it and we had no problem with it. There's no other questions, I'll move to approve.
And I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the temporary liquor license extension at Titletown Plaza. Any other questions, comments? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. 9C, action on Class B beer, Class B liquor license request for Hy-Vee Inc., DBA Hy-Vee. Okay, I will let Joel take this one so he can explain it a little bit.
Sure. Hy-Vee Incorporated doing business simply as Hy-Vee is looking to locate a retail store at the former Shopko Retail Center at the Bay Park Square Mall. This particular liquor license is a regular Class B beer, Class B liquor license, which is a little unusual for a retail grocery store. This particular item was brought forward to our Public Works and Protection meeting last week. In your packet, the Class B beer, Class B liquor license would encompass an area that's identified in the green on the floor plan. Hy-Vee is looking to operate a food hall, pub, and outdoor cafe area conjoined to their store in which they would be selling beer, wine, and liquor in open intoxicants for that particular operation. Hy-Vee will be coming, in fact, they did apply and will be coming forward in the near future with a Class A retail license, which will accommodate the wine and spirits department in the grocery store as well as other off-premise consumption retail sales throughout the store, which will be identified in a yellow area on the map. Any future approvals for Hy-Vee related to site plan, things of that nature will come forward at a future meeting. This is just strictly for the regular Class B beer, Class B liquor license as requested. Tyler is here this evening from Hy-Vee. If you have any particular questions, as I mentioned, this was brought forward to Public Works and Protection last week and was recommended for approval.
Hey, does anybody have any questions?
I just have a couple. Is the patio area going to be enclosed that you can only access it from the, in the store rather than exteriorly?
Could you state your name and address for the record, please, Tyler?
No problem. Tyler Power, 113 31st Avenue, Moline, Illinois, here on behalf of Hy-Vee. Thank you for your question. So it's hard to see on the screen here, but there is going to be a door where you can come in through the parking lot there as well as through the main area of the grocery store, which like I said, I could point out on the screen, but it's a little hard to see at this point.
So someone from outside can get into the patio area or someone could just walk out from the patio area out to the exterior and you're going to allow alcohol in that area?
Ideally, yes, we would like to do that. Typically what we would do is, you know, have a strong enforcement of that, ensuring that there is no open containers going to other places, not only just into the parking lot, but also, you know, throughout the grocery store. You know, we want to ensure that no open containers, no consumption is applied anywhere outside of that, that green space. For instance, in our Eau Claire store, we haven't had really any issues with that. The patio is sectioned off, we'll put usually like a fence around that area to help define the space and haven't had any issues to my knowledge with that.
Will our ordinances allow an open patio without, with access or do we require?
Yes.
This would be very comparable to some other Class B establishments and Doozy Stadium View, D2s. They have the outdoor patio area that's enclosed, but still an egress into that area from the exterior part of the store. In fact, one of, is our understanding that one of the conditions under this environment and why this is a little bit atypical in having a Class A retail license for the retail store and then a Class B license for the pub and the food halls, that there needs to be two separate entrances. One for the Class B area, one for the Class A area. And so that exterior entrance in the Class B will be required under the license condition.
Those questions were brought up years ago when we opened up the first patio at the hamburger place down on South Oneida Street. We were concerned on which way the gate went and all these other things that go along with having alcohol on a patio. I believe we could ask the chief if you've had any problems with alcohol being served beyond the fence line of any establishment here in Eshwabonan.
Other than game day?
Other than game day.
No, you know, in the two years that I've been here, we really haven't had a big issue with that here in Eshwabonan.
Yeah, I, I didn't think so. Those questions, or that question was brought up at the Public Works meeting we had last Tuesday. We had no problem with it as they said, it'll be just in the dark green area only. They will not be going outside of that, which I'm sure Ty and his company will take care of that very well, knowing the reputation they have. I think this is a good addition to Eshwabonan. It fills our mall up with the big box stores that we've got there. And if there's no other questions, I'll move to approve as presented.
I have a question yet. And this is-
Okay, can I have a second? And then we can ask-
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. Okay.
Okay, the question, and Tony had gone through this with me, but I noticed that Public Works waived the 90-day statement of intent. And I understand that a liquor license typically has to be used and operational within 90 days once they get it. I understand it's going to take a while to get your store up and I'm glad that you guys are coming and all of that. But my, and then Tony explained to me that then it will have to be renewed in like June or July of next year, this license that won't have been used at all until that point. My question is, when it goes through renewal, can we at that time put a timeline on it that it has to be used by the end of the year or something? Just to get some kind of timeline on this that it's used and it's operational within a certain period of time?
Yeah, it, it's my understanding, Tracy, that the reason why they need it now is because before the end of the year, they have to purchase the building and if, if they can't get the liquor license, they're not going to purchase the building.
Right, and I totally understand that, that they want to make sure they have this, but-
So that's a legal question, Tony? Can we put a timeline on it?
Excuse me. As part of the renewal process, you know, granting a license tonight will obviously give them the, the legal interest in the license. They'll have the right to, to go through the renewal process as part of the renewal process. There could be a timeframe that would be put on with respect to the operation aspect, given that that's an ordinance requirement. And then if for some reason there would be an issue with that, that could be addressed, you know, at that point. If there would be deemed some sort of so-called violation of that timeframe, there would still be the, the revocation or suspension process that would have to be going through because they would be granted the interest in the license.
Okay. There are any other comments, questions? So for the motion and the second, are we going to amend that to state with the 90-
Right.
To waive the 90 days?
90 days, correct.
Okay.
That was also brought up, I believe you brought that up, Jay?
Yep, we both. At the Public Works, we, we agreed to that. And again, it's because of the financing situation that you're in.
Right. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve the Class B beer, Class B liquor license for Hy-Vee Inc. Are there any more comments, questions? With the 90-day waiver? Okay, all those?
Yeah, I think this is a great addition in Eshwabonan. I, I just think this is really a great use of that space. It's in a great location. It fills needs within Eshwabonan, so I think it's a very positive thing all the way around.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're very excited to finally locate here in Eshwabonan. It's not every day you get to open up a 125,000 square foot store. So very exciting for us, looking forward to get opening and looking forward to the continued partnership with the village. So thank you for having me tonight.
Thank you.
When do you envision an opening? Do you have a timeline on that?
Next year is, is the plan. Obviously don't have a date or anything. Obviously we still have to close on the, on the building and, you know, a few other legalities and that construction thing still has to happen. So next year is the plan as of right now. So very aggressive.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, 9D, action regarding ordinance number O 11 dash 3 dash 21, rezoning parcels VA dash 228 dash 20 dash 7, VA dash 228 dash 20 dash 5, and VA dash 228 dash 20 dash 6. 2,300 block, South Ridge Road, from B2 General Business to R2, two-family residence. This was an item that was tabled at the last meeting to this meeting and I'll let Aaron explain the rest.
Sure, thank you. As, as Mary had mentioned, this agenda item was requested to be tabled by the applicant at the November Village Board meeting to the December Village Board meeting. I'd since spoken with the applicant who is still negotiations or discussions about alternative development possibilities. He did request that this get tabled as he termed to the future. I, I guess what I'd recommend at this point is to recommend tabling this action to no later than the February Village Board meeting. That way, if nothing has happened by the February Village Board meeting, the board can, I'd make a recommendation to deny the rezoning to put the action to bed, basically. So that way there's a, a final, finality in point for this project. At this point, the recommendation would be to table it to the February, or no later than the February 2022 Village Board meeting.
I'll make that motion.
A second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to table ordinance number O 11 dash 3 dash 21 to no later than the February Village Board meeting.
Very good.
And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. 9E, review and action regarding the 2022 dump truck outfitting quotes. Mr. Martin?
Yes, thank you. Before you tonight, just approved in the 2022 budget back in November was the purchase of two dump trucks for next year. We put, put out for quotes immediately because we'd received a lot of information or a lot of news regarding some of the supply chain issues. And, and we thank everybody that supplied quotes to us. They were very forthright, very honest in what they were saying. We appreciate Western Star Freightliner and, and International and, and what, what they said, what they did, how they provided everything to us. It was really appreciated. The, the good news in, in the quotes that we received is they came in well in terms of budget. The negative is, is the delivery times. There are two aspects to our dump trucks. There's the chassis and then there's the dump box, the plow, the salter, everything that you see on the backend. The dump box, the plow, the salter is typically a five to seven month delivery time. That's roughly around what they are now, about maybe nine months at, at latest. Not too big of an issue. It's, it's the chassis. The chassis are generally a seven to nine month. They're out 10 to 18 months at this point. So if we, if we act upon them, it's looking like a best case scenario, the chassis will be arriving November-ish of 2022, potentially spring of 2023. So we're bringing this before you tonight so that we can get our name on the list, if you will, get it, get the order in with the hopes that by the end of next year, we, we may have these trucks. Potentially it'll be early '23 when we would get them. Received quotes from all of our standard suppliers that provide us quotes. The lowest one was from Truck County Freightliner teaming up with Monroe Truck for the outrigging for dump truck at the cost of $251,676 apiece. There would be two of them. With that, I'll take any questions, folks.
Doug, are those tandem triaxler quad trucks?
They're, they're tandem.
They're tandem. Okay.
No, I think you guys have done a good job on this. The, the numbers are good numbers. We were doing the same thing in Bellevue and bottom line is you've got some good numbers there. I stopped down and saw Spencer and he explained to me all the different nuances of, of improvements and, and the two trucks that we're replacing are, they have some-
They're experienced.
Yeah.
Experienced.
Those are, those are, those are our last, last two that we need to-
Old as hell, I think is a better term to use.
I was, that was going to be my question, Doug. Is Spencer and, and Mike and Tim going to be able to keep them together until we get these two new ones?
Yes, Spencer had a, Spencer had a discussion with Lee and I a couple of weeks ago and he's got a couple of ideas. We don't call him MacGyver for, without good reason. He's got a couple of ideas of what to do with the, the two trucks we're replacing, 75 and 76, to get them through to next year.
Okay.
Unless there's any other questions, I'd make a motion to approve the purchase of the trucks as presented to Truck County Freightliner and Monroe Truck as well.
I'll second that. Oh, you're done, Steve?
Yeah, just that 251 676.
All right, I'll second that before the price goes up.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept the quotes for two dump trucks with Truck Country Freightliner and Monroe Truck for 251 676 each. Any other questions, comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
9F, action on election inspector appointments for the 2022-2023 election cycle. Chris?
Pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 7.30 sub 4 sub 8, attached is the listing of election inspector official appointments for the village of Eshwabonan for the 2022-2023 election cycle.
Okay. Does anybody want to make a motion to approve?
Chris, did they pass your inspection with lion colors and- Chris, did they pass your inspection with lion colors and qualifications?
They're just perfect.
I'll prove it. I'll prove it.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the election inspector appointments for 2022-2023.
I'd just like to thank all the election inspectors. I know they really work hard, and we appreciate the hard work they do for the minimal amount of pay that they get for those jobs. So, we greatly appreciate it, or I do. I'm sure the village does.
I'll second that. Every election, I always go to all the polling places and thank them all. And, yeah, they do a lot of hard work that day. So, okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 9G, consider discuss act on request by Merge Development slash Commonplace on Mike McCarthy Way LLC to approve collateral assignment of TIP developers agreement. Tony?
All right, as you can see by the attached letter, as well as draft collateral assignment agreement, Merge Development, or their newly created company, Commonplace on Mike McCarthy Way, has requested the village's consent and approval of these agreements as part of securing their financing to continue along with the project. It's a pretty standard request for all these sorts of developments. I have reviewed the draft agreement and have no issues for it, so I would just request the village's consent and approval, as required by the TIP agreement and the assignment.
Okay. Any questions, comments?
I heard you say standard procedure?
Correct.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the request by Merge for the collateral assignment of TIP developers agreement. Any more questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. 9H, consider discuss act on multimedia communication specialist position description and job announcement. Joel?
Thank you, Madam President. As you know, as part of the 2022 budget, a new position was included in the budget process for a multimedia communication specialist position. As a result of that inclusion in the budget, staff has prepared a job description and draft job announcement for consideration by the board to begin recruiting and filling that position in the first quarter of 2022. In your packet is the draft job description, as well as the announcement. This particular item was presented to the Finance and Personnel Committee this evening, in which they did recommend approval of both the job description and the job announcement, with one minor addition to the job description functions related to cybersecurity and just ensuring proper security of the electronic communications systems. In preparing the job description, staff looked at a variety of comparable jobs, in particular to communities in our general area, in particular, the city of Green Bay, the city of Appleton, and then some smaller communities around our size in the Fox Valley, and found that the job description that we drafted kind of matched some of those key functions, as well as provided confirmation on the salary range as being competitive and comparable to those other positions. Couple keynotes that I want to make light of this evening. One is that this particular position, based on the job description, would report directly to the village manager. I know as part of the original conversation at budget time, we talked about this position reporting to the IT manager, but as we began discussing the job description and the duties, and the importance and the relation to our strategic plan, we felt that it was important that this position be somewhat elevated, if you will, from an important standpoint, to put a little bit more weight behind it, to ensure that all departments are cooperating and working conjunctively with this individual to ensure that we're having consistent branded communication from the village. With that being said, however, there is a very strong component of the IT manager's role in this position. This individual will have to work directly and under the direction of the IT manager at times, as it relates to any of the informational systems that the village puts out, whether that's our public-facing webpage, our intranet site, networking issues, the communication and virtual meeting formats that we establish. All of those things will have some direct tie to the IT manager, and so Jeremy will play a vital role in overseeing this person and making sure that they're successful with the tools and resources they need.
So, you're just going to make it a dotted line to Jeremy?
Right. Yep, exactly. Ultimately, again, as I mentioned, if this is approved tonight, we'll begin the recruitment for this position effectively immediately. However, because of the holiday season, we will delay the actual review of applications until the end of January. So, typically, we do a two-to-three week recruitment. This one will likely be around a six-week recruitment. Again, just because we recognize the holidays, the start of the calendar year as being somewhat difficult to get and solicit applications. So, we will begin to review applicants at the end of January and begin the interview process shortly thereafter. With that, I'll answer any questions that you have with the proposed draft job description and job announcement.
Question, I went through the job description. I know our IT manager right now is really packed with a lot of things. Is that going to free up some of his time in order to take care of all the duties that are needed around here with the additional duties that you're putting on this new position?
Certainly. We hope so. Ultimately, what we want to more or less kind of take and delegate to this new position, one, obviously, the coordination of these meetings, the AV needs that go into that. So, Jeremy's working tonight coordinating the audiovisual needs. There's obviously follow-up after a meeting is completed as well. We have to go through a closed captioning process and upload process. Not that those take a substantial amount of time, but it's busy work that needs to happen. So, this individual will certainly accommodate that and free up Jeremy so he's not here every Tuesday evening coordinating meetings. Beyond that, content on website, intranet, social media, web response forms, things of that nature, Jeremy is currently coordinating those things, doing a great job, but he would be, you know, backed out of that, and this person would take a lead role in that effort, and then hopefully take a more proactive approach to it. Jeremy, because of time constraints, he doesn't have as much time to attend to those issues. Again, doing a great job, just has to have focuses elsewhere. This person would be able to advance those efforts as well.
Okay, very good.
On the question of cybersecurity, I kind of look at this as this particular position being more content-driven. And when you talk about cybersecurity, I actually think that needs to be added into Jeremy's job description.
Yeah, and that isn't...
Because that is more of a, that's where the cybersecurity would have to come. I don't see this person, because this is a content person, you know, Jeremy's working on all the firewalls and all of the, I see that being more in his, on his side rather than this position.
I think the feedback from the committee was because cybersecurity is such an important component to everyone's job description, because all of us go through monthly training on cybersecurity and phishing attacks and things of that nature. Although this person would be directly responsible for the organization's cybersecurity, they would still be responsible to uphold our cybersecurity principles and practices so that we aren't subject to an attack.
That would be in everybody's job description. I'm just saying that we probably need something more in Jeremy's.
Right.
Because he's the one that's going to get the software that's going to stop. That's right. So...
Okay, any more questions, comments?
I'd make a motion to approve the job description and the position description for the multimedia communication specialist.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the multimedia communication specialist job description and job announcement. Any more comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 9I, consider discuss act on village attorney position description and job announcement.
You can get out of there.
Joel?
Yes, unfortunately, we have to begin the recruitment for our village attorney. I don't want to, but we have to, unfortunately. As you know, Tony has...
I don't think we should let him go.
Right? I think we can just not allow it to happen, right? Unfortunately, Tony has submitted his resignation to the village. In fact, next week, Monday, December 20th will be Tony's last day. So, as a result of that departure, we tend to look at each position as vacancies occur, review the job description, and determine what future course of action we should undertake, given this opportunity. And so, presented to you tonight is the job description for the village attorney with a draft position or job announcement. We are looking to begin the recruitment to replace Tony at this time. This item was presented to the Finance and Personnel Committee this evening, in which they did recommend approval for that. Very similar to the media and communication specialist position, we begin to look to recruit immediately with a first review of application sometime after the end of January. Again, given the nature of the holidays and the timing, we would have a longer recruitment period. Finance and Personnel did have some good discussion related to the job description, in particular, related to the function of providing legal counsel to the village board on legislative issues, in relation, and then in relation to enforcement and prosecution effects to municipal court. And sometimes municipalities will see that those two functions being performed by two individuals. I don't know that we would necessarily have the ability to do two full-time attorneys, but certainly, you'd have to almost contract or do contracted services for one or the other. In likelihood, it would probably be more on the prosecution enforcement side. Our thought was from committee that we would continue to advertise an attorney position that would be in a combined role, where they would do both functions, and then based on the recruitment and the number of applicants we get, we can base whether or not that is a detriment to us in finding the best candidate by having those as a combined role. And then, at that point, we can make adjustments if necessary. But at this point, Tony has served us extremely well, and he did a great job with both efforts, from a legislative matter, as well as an enforcement point of view. So, we're going to go out, we're going to actively recruit Tony 2.0, and hopefully get a little bit better, maybe. I don't know, right, Tony?
Right.
So, again, committee recommended approval tonight, and so with that, I'll answer any questions you might have.
I don't think nobody's going to approve this. Tony, it's tough to say it, but I guess we'll have to approve it. You've got better things to do, and we got to go along with your wishes. We wish you good luck. You've done a great, great job for us through the difficult times that you had coming here five years ago, I believe it's been. So, thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
Tough guy to replace.
Thank you.
Good luck with your future.
Thank you. And I'll just say quickly, and this is hard, I'm very sad, and I don't want this to be about me at all. But it's been an absolute privilege to serve the village and to work with all of you. It's very deeply meaningful to me, and I wish everyone nothing but the best.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Same to you. All the best, you and your family.
Thank you.
With that, I'll make a motion to approve the position description and job announcement for the village attorney position as presented.
A second. We have a motion and a second to approve the village attorney position. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 9K, consider discuss efforts to increase directed enforcement for speed and traffic enforcement. Joel and Chief?
Just one last comment. It felt like that was a wake at the end there, right? There wasn't a lot of energy in that motion.
No, there wasn't.
All right, moving on then. Trustee Kubaki and trustee Flukie had requested the board have an opportunity to provide some direction and discussion as it related to directed enforcement, in particular, to speed and traffic. As you recall, this is a main action item in our strategic plan, and we've had a lot of conversation from a planning perspective on some of those needs. However, it's never really come to the forefront at the village board level. And so, I wanted to provide an opportunity for the trustees to provide feedback as it relates to that effort and what goals we should work towards and try to accommodate. With that, I've had just some brief conversations with Chief Yule on this topic, and asked him to just kind of be prepared with what they are actively working on to improve upon traffic and speed enforcement throughout the community. And then, finally, I'll mention that some information was passed along to us from trustee Flukie as it related to predictive analytics, as it relates to traffic crashes and speed enforcement and things of that nature. And chief and I met with a gentleman, Randy is his name. He works down in the Dane County area, in particular, through the DOT, and has done some contracted work here in Brown County to assist them in their predictive analytics. And it was interesting to me because I found out that we're doing a lot of that work already in-house. So, I thought that was kind of a neat component. So, with that, I'll pass it over to Chief Yule, and you can kind of talk briefly about what you guys have going on.
Sure. Appreciate the opportunity to speak on this. I'll just give the board a little bit of a background of kind of what we're already doing. First and foremost, I always encourage our officers, when they're able to, to go out and proactively enforce our traffic and traffic safety. When we get a complaint from a citizen, normally what happens is we will take that complaint, we will put it on the briefing sheet, so each shift has an idea of what the complaint is and where it is. From that point, our captains will, if we have people available, will assign people to those areas to go out and actively enforce in that position. You know, for what we also try to do is we have our community service officers go out and put out speed boards in those areas when we can. What that does is it really gives us an idea of, is there a problem, or is it a perceived problem from certain individuals? So, we'll do that, and we'll collect that data for about a week, and then we'll look at that and see what we have. As all of you may or may not know, normally when we have a speeding complaint in a certain area, 85, 90% of the issues are the residents in those areas. And so, what we can do, and hopefully maybe with this added position, is we can do a little more education when we get those complaints and put out some information, social media, whatever it might be, like, hey, you know, we're having some complaints in this area about speeding. Let's all do our part and drive safely. And so, Joel talked a little bit about that, and the D-DAX is called, Data Driven Analysis to Crash and Traffic Safety. I've assigned Commander Murphy is on with us today. If you'd like to ask him more questions about what we're currently doing with D-DAX, but really what that is, is it takes our traffic crash data and imports that into a map, so we can see kind of where we're having clusters of accidents. If the officers are using their, you know, Latin launch on their traffic citations, that'll also pull that data to show, okay, where are we giving warnings, where are we giving citations, what are we doing enforcement-wise? So, he's kind of spearheading that. He's been, he kind of went earlier this year, learned a little bit more about that, has worked with Randy Wiesinger on that program to kind of get us up to speed on that. So, that's kind of what we're currently doing. We have some opportunities, I think, as a department to work a little more heavily in these areas when we have the opportunities to. We are planning on doing that. The command staff and I are actually going to get together and actually look over all of our strategic goals and see how we can further that for the upcoming year. But this is one of those areas where, no matter where you live, speeding is always an issue, and we will certainly do our part when we can to make sure that we reduce those instances.
And if I recall, chief, this is kind of where you're adding those two positions, that you're hoping to get more...
Right. The paid-on-premise position is really hoping to help our staffing on the paramedic side, which then in turn allows us to have a few more officers out there available to handle calls and handle enforcement issues within the community.
Yeah, I kind of brought this up. Tracy had talked to me a little bit about it, and we talked to Mary and Joel and that type of thing. And we understand, you know, we're a commercial community. We have major conduits of transportation, and there are some that are more interesting than others. And the one that comes to mind, you know, is of course our premier road, Oneida Street. And if you're at Hanson and Oneida, you better have your head on a swivel at points in time.
Absolutely.
Yellow means just go faster, I think. And with that, that was one location that came to mind. I know at one point in time, we had a traffic enforcement officer that was dedicated to traffic enforcement, and I know you guys are busier than heck relative to EMS. I mean, EMS is taking more and more... I mean, EMS is taking more and more of the time and effort of you and your staff and your employees and that type of thing, and it's just, we wanted to just bring it to forefront for discussion. You know, Oneida Street's one that, you know, I see on a regular basis, you know? Even if I'm in an industrial park, I could be doing 40 miles an hour, and I get people driving past me doing 60 in a pickup truck with a loud muffler.
Has that happened to you before?
Yeah. Fully.
Doing text messaging.
Yeah.
Well, and that's a great point. I mean, if you think about it, it's not just speeding that's an issue. Not only do we have the congestion, especially on Oneida Street, but we have more and more distracted drivers today than we've ever had. You'll, you know, you and I both have seen that, you drive by people and their heads down looking at their phone. So those are the issues that we certainly would like to be able to address. A lot of that is community education and enforcement part, and our officers' part weren't able to do that. And I think that, you know, unfortunately for us, the enforcement part sometimes comes after the accident in determining what the cause of the accident was. But certainly more community education we can put out there during that stuff and work on these goals. But like I said, there's opportunities for us to increase some of our enforcement efforts, and our plan is to do that in 2022 for sure.
And we have more and more people, we have more and more development, the multifamily, Hy-Vee, Steinhoffels, the Titletown District, what's happening on the riverfront. You know, I mean, the congestion's only going to get more interesting as we go forward. And I guess this topic came up just from the perspective of what can we be doing more in these areas, knowing our limitations relative to public safety and EMS requirements and that kind of thing. But it was just meant to bring it forward so that everyone could get maybe some input or some thoughts and some ideas, and no more, no less, so.
The one thing I have to say, when I was on that call, you know, that with Randy, was his name? A lot of the traffic accidents were young drivers, so young inexperienced drivers. So is it good that we can just sign off on our children to get their driver's license these days? I don't know. I'm not saying it is, I'm not saying it's not, I'm just questioning the process, but anyway.
We had a BikePed meeting last night, and Jeff Panzer was there. And I think it's great you're including education and enforcement, but with a lot of these issues that come about, we also need to include engineering. Because we were talking about the New Bellon site at our BikePed committee last night, and we were talking specifically BikePed. Well, Jeff is on the committee, and he said, Trace, we also need to think about the speed of the motor vehicles going through there. He's like, that is the spot that he sits. They're coming down Ridge, and they are flying to get on the freeway. They're going right past, they're going right past the New Bellon site. He said, we need to do something about slowing those vehicles down. And he said, the speed limit on Oneida Street is 30. The speed limit on Wabi is 35. Why is that? So there's things that we can look at. Everything cannot be fixed by enforcement. The police can't be out there 24/7 taking care of that stuff. You have to educate people, we have to educate our officers, educate the people that are out there. But there also are engineering fixes that need to be looked at as well. And I would encourage that our public safety department, maybe there's a small internal staff committee, and maybe there already is, and I'm not aware of it, that includes someone from our engineering department, enforcement, and education, who's going to take on the education, and look at these issues and try to solve them in a three-pronged method, because it's not going to work with just enforcement. And enforcement still needs to be a lot more than it is, in my opinion. But you can't do it all your own. So you need to take and look at these things in a big view and see what you can do. I mean, Jeff even, we talked about the two crosswalks that are on Oneida Street, on the south end of Oneida Street, and he's like, I would never walk across that, you can pay me enough to walk across those crosswalks. There's six lanes there, folks. There is red print, red paint on the ground, that's it. And people are flying. They are flying either to get on the freeway, or they're flying, they just got off. And again, that is an engineering issue. That needs to be looked at that way as well. So we're never going to make things better by just saying enforcement has to do everything because they can't. We need to look at it in the full circle.
It's kind of like a situation where you want to have easy access into and out of the same point in time. You don't want congestion, but the congestion slows things down. Look at Holmgren Way. Holmgren Way is a heck of a lot slower than Oneida Street because it's got the.
Yeah, turns.
Yeah, I mean, it's tough to go fast on Oneida Street.
It is, which is good.
It's just got its own innate traffic calming built into the program.
To the design, yeah.
And, you know, so you're right, there's more than one way to skin that cat.
Yeah.
Well, as Gary says, if we don't have congestion, we don't have growth. So apparently, we're growing pretty well. What do you think, Gary?
Well, personally, if you want my opinion, you know, years ago, a stop sign meant stop.
Yeah.
A speed limit meant go to the speed limit, you know? But all these signs today are just suggestions. You know, our whole world will defy anything that has 25 miles an hour. That ain't meant for me. That's the whole problem we got in this world today. You can do all you want to do all these enforcements, but till the people realize what is wrote in law and you obey it, you won't have them problems. And I got to give you a compliment. In my neighborhood, of all the neighborhoods, we're all nice people there, we had a complaint of excess speeding on our street. Finally, and it was funny because your car was parked at the end of the street, monitoring all these people going 25 miles an hour because they know the trustee lives on this road. But your people stopped and asked me, what is going on here? Because they don't see a problem. And we had a nice talk, and you know, I think it was just somebody who probably got out of bed the wrong way one day and thought somebody went by his house too fast, because there was no speeders. But you people did a good job on patrolling it to find out, and they didn't see any problem. So I think what you talked about in your first part of your speech there, you've been doing that already. You've been taking care of the complaints as they come in. And what is this all driven to? It's all complaint-driven. So if the people got a problem, call the one concerned. It's no different than any call we get in the village. It's complaint-driven, and the people here take care of it as they come in. So I feel as though everybody's doing a good job on what is going on right now.
Well, that's one of the reasons why we like to use the speed boards to really figure out. I mean, obviously, when we have a squad sitting there, traffic behavior is probably going to change, right? Because they see the squad there. So we use the speed boards to try to determine whether or not we actually have a problem. Sometimes the speed boards are on, sometimes it may look like they're off, but we're there collecting data just so we make sure we have an understanding of what really is the problem. You know, how many cars are driving, you know, 5, 10, 15 miles an hour over the limit? So we could really determine not only how many, but the time of day we really have the issue, so we can really direct our officers to those specific periods and not have, try to tie up a car for eight hours a day and see nothing.
Chief, does your speed boards have data in them to tell you who's speeding, who's not speeding?
Well, they collect data on all the cars that go by, and they collect the speed limit on all the cars go by and the time of day. So we know how fast, you know, we'll set the speed limit, it's 25, we set it at 25, and then we'll collect the data on those vehicles that are going, you know, third, the speed limit or under the speed limit, or 5, 10, 15 over. And like I said, it collects the data on the number of cars that are going X amount an hour over and the time of day they're doing that.
Wouldn't it be easier just to rate the speeds limit if they're going 40 miles an hour than 25?
Rate, no. We're.
I think that ties to Tracy's argument that you're, you know, you engineer the roads for 40 miles per hour, but you post it at 25, and then you'll get 40 miles per hour on the road, so.
I know. It's like our president had a comment once, why change the signs, they're going 30 miles an hour already? So when they change it out here in Oldham.
Right.
I guess what I would like to do, just to kind of further the conversation, is maybe just, as Tracy had alluded to, maybe put together some type of internal review team, maybe tie in Chief and his command staff, along with some officers that have some additional, you know, tenured experience, if you will, to traffic enforcement in Ashwabanon, tie in our public works department, our planning folks, and maybe even GIS if there's some component to our geographic information system. And then put together kind of maybe an approach for how we want to set some goals, if you will, that we could bring back to the board. And then that way, there's some things that we can work on, and that will support the chief and his department's efforts in this particular action item.
Well, and we have a good example of it. Jeff Panzer again had brought up at BikePed about how dark it was on Holmgren Way, reached out to Doug, Doug worked with WPS, and got LED lights out. So the lighting is much better. And I asked Jeff, is it better out there now? And he said, yeah. So that's just one simple example of someone from public safety reaching out to engineering and saying, can you help us with this? And I don't know if you guys are aware, but this came up again at BikePed, but another trouble area, it seems to be in the village, is Cormier Road and Ridge, excuse me, Pilgrim Way, right by the viaduct where it goes under. There were two or three members on the BikePed committee that said that is, that intersection is a nightmare right now. There are cars, they will not wait to stop coming off of Pilgrim Way, and you'll have four or five of them just like tailgate right out of there. And that like someone's, there's been two bicyclists that have been hit up there already. So it's, I don't know, she's like, I don't know what's going on, but all of a sudden, it is terrible. You cannot, she goes, I don't go through that intersection, I go a different way. So it might be something to look at. She was going to let Jeff know that there were concerns up there, and the traffic evidently backs up almost to those new homes that are in the corner of Ridge and Pilgrim Way, you know?
3:00 in the afternoon.
Yeah, I would imagine that's going to depend on the time of day and what time the high school is getting out.
That's when school gets out. You know, you never try.
She said it's still 6:00 at night, that it's just.
Well, there's activities through the school, so I would imagine, and that intersection, as I think about it itself, because I travel a lot, you know, because of the overpass there with the interstate, it's tough to see through there, and it's tough to get out, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's something that we could certainly.
She said it's a good place to round about.
That is the one spot in the village that I think would be good for a roundabout.
Hey!
But, and I'm not a big roundabout.
That's above public safety, so we'll let you deal with that one.
It is tough. I'm just, my solution to it, I just don't go on Pilgrim and then turn left onto Cormier. So.
That's what they're saying last night, they just don't even go there.
Yep. Yeah, okay. So do we, do we need a motion of any sort? Okay.
Just, this is just for discussion purposes.
Okay, discussion only. Okay, thank you.
I do like your idea of putting that group together. I think that's the way to approach it, set the goals and then report back type of thing.
Yep. Okay, 9L, consider discuss act COVID-19 Preparedness and Response Plan Amendment, COVID Emergency Leave.
So this is the approximately third time that this has come back before the board, primarily because the pandemic seems to be continuing. Essentially, we have a COVID emergency leave provision within our COVID response plan that allows for employees to take time off of work for COVID-related issues related to isolating requirements and quarantining requirements under our guidance. So what we're looking to do is extend the deadline of when that provision is set to expire. Currently is set to expire on December 31st. Because of the Delta variant, the number of positive cases that we're experiencing, we felt it was important to extend it yet again. We are looking to extend that policy expiration date to June 30th of 2022. One quick note here is that we have been providing up to 80 hours of paid leave under provisions of this policy that was funded through the CARES Act and ARPA dollars. What we are proposing to do here is that we would continue to extend that offer. However, at the start of the calendar year, we would not be providing any additional hours than what had been provided previously. So with that, if we had an employee that has used their full 80-hour allotment, that allotment is now gone, and now they would have to more or less dip into one of their other accruals, their traditional sick time, vacation time, or other compensatory time that they may have earned. If an employee has not used their full allotment of the 80 hours of COVID leave, that benefit would be extended as part of that policy. So if somebody in January has some type of quarantining requirement, and they have not used their 80 hours, they could then dip into that because it hasn't been used. So no new paid benefit is being extended by this provision. We're just extending the existing benefit that remains unused for certain employees. So with that, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Seems fair to me. All right, if there's no questions, I'll move to approve the extension of the COVID leave to June 30th, 2022.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Under discussion. Just a question, it seems there's been a fair amount of employees that have been affected by COVID recently, of what I've heard. Is it time to reinitiate or put the mask mandate back in? I know, are we just following CDC, or what are we following for that if we seem to be getting hit kind of hard lately?
Yeah, interestingly, the, from what I understand, my experience in talking with those in HR and our confidential secretary, most of the exposure incidents are actually occurring outside of work. We've had very few interactions. There are some where we do have exposure incidences at work, I'm not suggesting they're not, but the majority of cases that we're experiencing are outside of work, unfortunately. And so that's where the root cause of it is. There's social events and gatherings and things of that nature, from what I'm hearing. With that, we follow Brown County's recommendations as far as the mask requirement goes. So if you can maintain a social distance and things like that, then generally speaking, you don't need to wear the mask. If you're in tight confined quarters in close proximity to somebody, then you're encouraged to. Public safety, obviously, if they're dealing with the public, then they're wearing masks as well.
Any other questions? There are none. We have a motion and a second to approve the extension of the COVID emergency leave to June 30th, 2022. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Okay, thank you. Number 10, items for next agenda. If anybody has anything, give the office a call. Number 11, closed session items. During the meeting, the village board of the Village of Ashwabnan may convene into closed session pursuant to A, Wisconsin Statute Section 19.85, Paren 1, Paren E, to consider discuss act on deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business regarding the following. 789 Armed Forces Drive Tax Parcel VA-41-4-E, the TIP Developers Performance Agreement with GenCap Dana Ashwabnan 75 LLC Tax Parcel VA-56-4-1, Ashwabna May Park Tax Parcel VA-172, project where competitive or bargaining reasons require closed session. B, Wisconsin Statute Section 19.85, Paren 1, Paren E, to consider discuss act on deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business regarding collective bargaining negotiations with Ashwabnan Public Safety Association, or any public employee where competitive or bargaining reasons require closed session. C, Wisconsin Statute Section 19.85, Paren 1, Paren C, to consider discuss act on the employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data regarding collective bargaining negotiations with Ashwabnan Public Safety Association, or of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. D, Wisconsin Statute Section 19.85, Paren 1, Paren G, to consider discuss act regarding the TIP Developers Performance Agreement with GenCap Dana Ashwabnan 75 LLC for tax parcel VA-56-4-1, and conferring with legal counsel concerning strategy to be adopted by the board, excuse me, with respect to litigation in which it is likely to become involved. That's a lot of reading. The village board may thereafter reconvene into open session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute Section 19.85, Paren 2, to report the results of the closed session and consider the balance of the agenda. I need a motion to go into closed session.
So move. Second it.
We have a motion and a second to go into closed session. Roll call, please. President Kardasky. Yes. Trustee Paul.
Yes.
Trustee Kabaki.
Yes.
Trustee Krueger.
Yes.
And Trustee Flukie.
Yes.
This conference is no longer being recorded.
It looks a little bit like Chief Carey.
That would drive me nuts.
I was just doing a little shaving.
So you can do some shit.
Exactly. Because he's got his beard and everything. I figured, okay, I'm going to leave this right here until we can... I was worried, that's why I wouldn't, you weren't there. 6:30, that's why.
And I told him, the dog, mixed back, which is Bernie's mountain dog and another dog. So I got to let them off. I let them off. And Cheryl's watching TV, and it shows the meeting starting here. She said, yeah, the meeting's starting.
All of a sudden, I started my crashing.
Well, you get the hours and the days.
I turned the video card off.
They needed it, so I just leave.
Not quite.
I wouldn't have a problem.
Too busy.
It's not in order.
Yeah.
But, yeah, it's coming together.
Are they going to come in? These fellows are going to come in and you're going to greet them?
Just stay on.
Where you are?
Yeah, we've kind of, we've touched base.
Oh, you have already?
Already, yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
That was a lot of...
Oh, okay.
I moved them.
Sorry.